Good evening and welcome to the public hearing for the Livingston Zoning Board of Adjustment. Today is June 24th. If you are an applicant for a D or use variance, you should be aware that such a variance can only be granted after showing that special regions, reasons for the grant of the variance exist and that variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zoning plan of the township of Livingston. You should also be aware that in order to be granted such a variance, you will require an affirmative vote of five members of the seven-member Board of Adjustment. Other variances require a majority of four members to grant that variance. If you're an applicant for any variance and your variance is denied by this board, you have a right to appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of notice of decision, and that court may overturn the decision of this board. If you're an objector to any type of variance that has been granted, you too may appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of the notice of decision. If you do file an appeal, I ask that you please provide a copy of your complaint to the Planning Administrator Jackie Hollis. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided to the Star Ledger and Wessex Tribune, and a copy was also posted on the Bulletin Board of the Municipal Building. In addition to having notice posted, notice of this meeting was placed on the township's website. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions or to make statements regarding each application at the appropriate time. When the time comes, if you would like to address the board, please come to the front and use the microphone so we can make sure your comments or questions are part of the record. And before we call the roll, I just want to make sure, if you're here for 83 Falcon or for 20 Cambridge, those two applications have been adjourned. So, okay, thank you. Okay, and now, Mr. Kenia, will you?
The roll call. Mr. Kenia is here. Mr. Horn.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Chairman.
Here.
Ms. Yon is out. Mr. Weisman.
Here.
Ms. Soyl is out. Ms. Khan.
Here.
And Mr. Beer is out. Motion.
And tonight, we'll be calling the first application. We're going a little bit out of order. Is one breton place?
Okay.
What?
Just make a quick announcement. We have six members here tonight, so there is a quorum. If you have a D variance, which would include any habitable-floor area ratio variance, please be aware that you need five of the six people on the board to vote in favor of your application. Just be aware of that when you proceed forward tonight.
No, no problem. Thank you. So, number block 2803, lot 3, one breton place, application number 2025-52-V, RODAC Builder LLC. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family house in violation of 170-87cc3 habitable-floor ratio. 21% allowed, 22.72% proposed, 1.72% variance requested.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, members of the board, I'd like first of all, I'd like to thank you for... He just warned me about that, too, and I missed it. Like, thank you for taking this application. I'm very happy to see you and being upright. It's much better. Appreciate all your well wishes at the last meeting. At this time, we have, I'd like to have our planners sworn in. Our architect is probably in the parking lot. I just got a buzz from him. So, we're gonna do it a little backwards. We'll do the planning, and then I'll have the architect to answer any questions. So, Mr. Wenzel, if you could swear a minute.
We'll start with Mr. Graviano. Okay. Mrs. Graviano?
Just give me one second. I'll pull up the site plan, because it'll help with the planning testimony. Mr. Cedra's here, so we can start.
So, do you want to start with Mr. Cedra?
Yeah, I'll start with him, yeah.
Okay.
I was just trying to get him a chance to park his car and get here, but that's okay. We'll switch. Thank you.
Okay. Well, okay, why don't we start? Mr. Cedra, why don't we get you sworn in when you're set?
Sure. Oh, you got the plans. Okay, I'm ready.
Ready? Okay. Did you take a breath, Mr. Cedra, since you ran in? Okay. Do you swear in front and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. I'm in Cedra. Last name S-C-E-D-R-A.
All right. Mr. Cedra has appeared before this board numerous times, qualified as an architect. Mr. Cedra, you're still a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Okay.
Nobody sent you a hearing bill saying you're out?
I didn't receive the email yet.
Does anyone on the board?
Madam Chairman, I've submitted him as an architect.
Thank you, and we accept you. Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There being no objections, this witness is accepted as expert in architecture?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Cedra, could you please give the board the benefit of your design on this particular property and then pay as particular attention to the floor area ratio, but also a couple of things that the board always likes to see? When you talk about the attic, please indicate the access, because that's a very important issue in Livingston.
Sure. Sure. So, I'm gonna start with the first sheet that shows the first and basement plan. The first floor plan consists of the living spaces that's needed for a single family, including the dining room, living room, kitchen, family room. And we have also a powder room, pantry, and butler pantry. Also, we have a guest room in this level with its own bathroom and closet. And we have two-car garage accessible from the side of the street as well. The area for the first floor is 1,662. The garage area is 442 square feet. To the left of that, we have the basement. The basement consists of one big open space for recreational, and we have a media room and a playroom. Also, we have a guest bedroom with its own Egress access. The area for the basement is 1,662. The next sheet is the, on the left, we have the second floor. The second floor consists of four bedrooms with its own closets and bathrooms. Also, we have a laundry room. And I forgot to mention that the first floor has only a single-story family room. So, the area on the right is the roof for the family room. The second floor area is 1,857. We have a floor area ratio of 3,519 square feet with a total of 22.72%. Also, I would like to mention that there is an area counted double, which is about 55 square feet, which is a two-story foyer. It's a double space, counted twice, but only used once. The access to the attic will be through a pull-down stair from the hallway at the second floor. And looking at the elevation, it's a colonial-style home with horizontal siding, hardy siding at the first and second floor. We have a bordan baton vertical siding at the gable ends, and we have a stone base at the bottom. And again, the windows, they're double-hung windows. It's more of a traditional-looking building with some modern accents. And attic height from the attic floor to the ridge beam is about, we have about eight feet. To the collar tie, we have five feet. And I think that's all for this building.
And the total floor area ratio that we're seeking?
We're 22.72. We're asking for 1.72%.
And add that 1.72%, you're talking about that we have 55 feet that are counted twice.
Correct.
And that's basically based upon Livingston's calculation, because even though it's an open foyer, they calculate each level as a three-home. They would've counted it 55, 55, 55, but here, twice, we're 55.
We're not exceeding, actually, the habitable-floor area, which the town calls for 3,520. We are at 3,519.
So, we're under that allowable. Madam Chairman, I ask that if he's examined by anybody from the board, may have any questions?
Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anyone in the public have any questions for this witness? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cedra.
Okay. In this case, I would like to post my planner, Mr. Graviano.
Mr. Graviano, do you swear in front and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay. And Mr. Graviano's been accepted as an expert here many times in the past as a planner. Mr. Graviano, you haven't received any emails from the state telling you your license is not up to date?
No, sir.
Okay. Chair?
Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness?
Yeah, I know.
There being no objections, this witness is accepted as an expert in planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Nick, you're fully familiar with this subject property, and you've been out to the site. You've heard the testimony of our architect in reference to the particular property, and you've also had an opportunity to review the site plan. Is that correct?
That's correct. I've been to this site on two separate occasions, the most recent before the hearing today. The applicant is before the board this evening for a specific piece of property known as block 2803, lot 3. It's within the R3 residential zone. It's actually slightly oversized at 15,489 square feet, whereas 15,000 square feet is required. The applicant is meeting all of the required setbacks for the district. Additionally, the applicant is maintaining a smaller building footprint with this proposal. The previous dwelling was actually approximately 80 square feet larger in footprint than what the applicant's proposing this evening. The applicant's only variance request before the board does relate to the habitable-floor area ratio, whereas 22.72% is proposed, 21% is permitted by code. That's a 1.72% increase than what's permitted by ordinance. As Mr. Cedra indicated, the home is under the habitable-floor area ratio. It meets that requirement. This is one of those situations to be technical here. The math isn't mathing. It's an oversized lot, but it can't meet the habitable-floor area percentage. So, certainly, that variance could be granted promoting the purposes of zoning of the municipal land use law. Purpose A: promotion of public health, safety morals, and general welfare. Purpose G: to provide sufficient space and appropriate location for a variety of residential uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And then, lastly, you'll see with the revised building footprint and design of not only the site, but the house as well, it certainly promotes purpose I: desirable visual environment and creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. The FAR variance certainly could be granted without substantial impairments to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. And as you all know, with the FAR variance cases, the test here is can the site accommodate the proposal given the increase in FAR? Here, the applicant is meeting all of the required bulk requirements, is meeting the required off-street parking, so there's certainly the ability to accommodate the structure on the property. So, in summary, the FAR variance could be granted advancing purposes of zoning A, G, and I, with no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance.
And here, we have a rather unique from most of our normal applications. And one, the site itself is oversized. And number two, the actual footprint is less than the pre-existing house.
That is correct.
So, there's two unique features of this application that we don't normally have when we present these applications.
Certainly. It's certainly a design that took in careful consideration of the site, and is certainly a befitting design of this corner location.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, I submit, Mr. Graviano, write equations to the board already.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Graviano. Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness? Does anyone in the public have any questions for this witness?
Madam Chairman, that's all we have. I mean, this is rather a unique situation. We have an oversized lot. We have a house being built that's smaller in footprint than the existing. It's a minimum deviation, and I believe that we have given you all of the necessary proofs for you to be able to grant this application, and I would ask that you do so. Thank you so much.
And that's your closing statement?
Huh?
And that's your closing statement?
That is it. I'm done.
Does anyone in the public want to make a statement? Does anyone on the board want to make a statement? Does anyone on the board want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yeah.
Mr. Kenia? Yes. Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, board.
I'd like to really thank you for taking me first. Hopefully, when I come here in July, we can dance the jig.
And we'll take you last.
Let me tell you something. If I can dance in July, you can take me last.
Thank you so much.
Block 2801, lot 342, Falcon Court, application number 2025-42-V. Yuri Goldman. Applicants seek approval for an addition in violation of the following section. 170-98C3 side yard setback. 10 feet required, 7.83 proposed, 2.71 feet variance requested.
Hi there. Will anyone be joining you tonight?
I'm joined by my architect, Ken Wendell, and...
The contractor.
Okay. Thank you.
John Lehman.
Are you Mr. Goldman?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Goldman, and you just indicated that you're gonna have your architect and potentially your contractor...
Yeah.
...talk about the application tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you want to start with your architect?
Sure.
I think that's a great idea.
I work for the architect. I'm not the architect. I just do all the drawings for the architect.
Okay. So, you're actually the guy who does all the real work?
I do all the real work, yes.
Okay. So, you, all right. So, sir, why don't we have you up at the podium?
Sure.
All right. Sir, can we please have your name for the record?
Sure. Ken Wenzel.
Wenzel?
Yes, it is. No relation. I don't know you.
Wow. Okay. Yeah, yeah. I gotta double-check that, you know, because there's, like, very few of us hanging around. All right. Well, you know, well, that's, he's from the other side. He's from, he's from, he's from the normal side of the family.
From the good side.
All right. By the way, great name. Okay. So, Mr., I'm gonna have a problem here. Someone, Mr. Wenzel, I've never had to do that before. This is like deja vu. All right. So, Mr. Wenzel, you indicated that you are not the architect...
Correct.
But you work for the architectural firm?
Correct.
And you prepare the drawings?
Correct.
Okay. And so, the architect signed and sealed the drawings?
Correct.
So, you are fully familiar with the drawings and with regard to Mr. Goldman's application?
Yes.
Okay. And you're able to present that tonight even though you're not the architect?
Mm-hmm.
Are you, are you a licensed architect?
No.
Okay. All right. So, we're gonna, we're gonna swear you in now. I forgot to do that. So, why don't we do that? Mr. Wenzel, do you swear in front and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, just for the board's perspective on this, that Mr. Wenzel, not this one, that Mr. Wenzel is going to be testifying based upon his factual knowledge of the drawings. He is not able to testify as an architect, because he's not, but the architectural plans were signed and sealed, and he was involved with that. So, from time to time, this does happen where someone from the architectural firm appears to identify this. So, at the end of the day, he is identifying what the architectural plans are, but he's not testifying as an expert, just so the board's aware of that.
Swear.
I swear.
Oh, you did, okay. I'm sorry.
I swear. There was a lot of, there was a lot of hollery there.
There's so much going on here. Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? And there being no objections, this witness is accepted as an ex, as, no, no, as someone who has actual knowledge in the drawings of these plans.
Correct.
Was that good?
Fantastic. All right. So, Mr. Goldman, why don't we let that Mr. Wenzel walk you through this, the architectural plans?
Sure. You have them here?
Sorry. Does anyone, did I ask if anyone on the board has any, did I ask that? Okay.
Two Falcon Court.
Two Falcon?
Yeah.
Is this from, is, are these the plans from your firm?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead. Why don't you walk the board through it?
Well, the gist of it is, we're going for a sideyard variance, being that the variance is 11 feet, or I'm sorry, the sideyard setback is 10 feet, and we're going to be at 7'10". So, we're actually two feet plus or minus for a garage addition that sits over on the left side, only because the existing garage, unless you have a Mini Cooper, you can't open the door without hitting the wall and walk around the car at the same time. So, in this case, we get an extra two or three feet, and it's more feasible garage that the homeowner can use. Everything else is conforming, so it's just the sideyard setback that's, that's an issue.
So, Mr. Wenzel, so you're saying that because the current garage is very small, in order for Mr. Goldman to be able to use it for something larger than a Ducati motorcycle...
Pretty much.
...you, you need the extra room, and there's only one way to go?
Yeah. Unfortunately, the way it's set, it's the only way you can go is to the left, and again, it encroaches with about two feet into the sideyard setback.
Okay.
But only in a small, because it's like a pie shape, so it's, it's only a small triangular addition to, into the setback.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness? No?
So, the size of the garage is expanding from what to what? I see three feet more.
Yeah. It's 10 feet, so now it's 13.
It's 10, so it's 13.
Yeah.
Does anyone in the public have any questions for this witness? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. I'd like to say that.
Can I leave now, too?
So, Mr. Goldman, are you going to present anyone else, or are you gonna rely on the testimony of the architect, who has told us what the reason is for your having to do the sideyard extension?
I think we're good with his testimony. We're good with Ken's statement. We're okay. We don't need any additional...
Okay. Does anyone in the public want to make a statement? Does anybody on the board want to make a statement? Does anybody on the board want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Mr. Shaw gets it. Everybody's fighting for it. Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Kenia? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
And Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Block 3501, lot 1595, here, terrace. Application number 2025-44-V. Liang Zhang and Jiahuna Tang. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family house in violation of the following section. 170-87BB4 habitable-floor area, 3,220 square feet allowed, 3,489 square feet proposed, 269 square feet variance requested.
Hello.
Okay.
Hello. Nice to see you.
I have not been before this board for a while.
A long time.
I thought I was retired.
Not so lucky. Mr. Wenzel, can you please swear on this witness?
Okay. Well, I just want to be sure, is the property owner here? Is that Mr. Zhang?
This happens to be his cousin. They are out of town and asked his...
So, so, this poor man drew the short straw to join us tonight?
Exactly.
Okay. Welcome, sir. Welcome. Okay. So, no, because the, he's the one that went with them. Okay. That's okay. No problem.
The monkey cousin went on vacation.
Yeah. No worries, sir. No worries. We just want to make sure that somebody from the applicant is here. All right, ma'am, why don't we swear in? Do you swear in front and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. My name is Christine Lynn Miseo, M-I-S-E-O. I'm a licensed architect and planner in the state of New Jersey. My licenses are current. They have my money, which is actually up at the end of this month. They just cashed the check. I have been before this board probably 100 times, but I don't know if before too many of you guys, Lori, of course, or Chairman Khan now.
Vice Chair. The chair's not here.
Oh, okay.
I'm playing the chairwoman tonight.
Oh, okay. Anyway, so, I have been retired and got sort of sucked back in, and I am here, and hopefully you won't see me again. But I'm here to present this case. It's on 95 beer terrace.
Why don't we just finalize your, we'll have the chairwoman finalize your qualifications?
Oh, okay.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There being no objections, this witness is accepted as an expert architect. Thank you.
Thank you. We are removing an existing house that was built in 1966. It's approximately 1,700 square feet, and what we are going to be doing is putting up a new two-story, single-family residence that is 3,489 square feet. We are looking for one variance, and that is habitable-floor area. The maximum habitable-floor area in this zone, which is R4, is 3,220, so we are 269 square feet over the habitable-floor area. We are not over the floor area ratio at all. The floor area ratio with this lot is only 23.25. This zone allows 30%. The lot is approximately 15,000. I believe the survey says 15,006 square feet, which gets you up towards R3. And this house, if you did go into the R3 numbers or... My mind just...
Lot size.
Yeah, thank you. Lot size. It would need lot size of R3, but it would still be under the habitable-floor area for R3, and we would only be 1.25% over the floor area ratio, though we are considerably under the floor area ratio for R4. I believe because of this size of the lot, that we can easily handle the additional 269 square feet in habitable-floor area. This lot, there's only one other lot across the street that's approximately 1,500 square feet, and I believe the tax map said it was 1,502 square, 15,002 square feet. All the other lots in the area are between 11,000 and 13,000 square feet. So, overall, the mass of this lot and the size of this lot can handle the little bit bigger square footage. We need no front yard, rear yard, or side yard variances. We need no height variances. It's a very simple house, as you can see, and it is a very, very large lot. We tried to condense the driveway on the left side of the house and a very simple walk. You can see the, maybe I can walk up to the board. Might be easier. This area is a covered porch. This is the two-story area of the house.
Hello.
Okay.
Hello. Um, nice to see you.
I have not been before this board for a while.
A long time.
I thought I was retired.
Not so lucky.
I know.
Mr. Wenzel, can you please swear on this witness?
Okay, well, I just want to be sure, is the property owner here? Is that Mr. Zhang?
This happens to be his cousin. They are out of town and asked his.
So, so this poor man drew the short straw to join us tonight?
Exactly.
Okay, welcome, sir, welcome, okay.
You're not the favorite cousin.
No, because the, he's the one that went with them. Okay, that's okay, no problem.
The monkey cousin went on vacation.
Yeah, no worries, sir, no worries. We just want to make sure that somebody from the applicant is here. All right, ma'am, why don't we swear in? Do you swear for and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. My name is Christine Lynn Miseo, M I S E O. I'm a licensed architect and planner in the state of New Jersey. My licenses are current, they have my money, which is actually up at the end of this month. They just cashed the check. I have been before this board probably a hundred times, but I don't know if before too many of you guys, Lori, of course, or Chairman Khan now.
Vice Chair, the chair's not here.
Oh, okay.
I'm playing the chairwoman tonight.
Oh, okay. Anyway, so, um, I have been retired and got sort of sucked back in and I am here and hopefully you won't see me again. But, um, I'm here to present this case. It's a ninety-five beer terrace.
Why don't we just finalize your, we'll have the chairwoman finalize your qualifications.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There being no objections, this witness is accepted as an expert architect. Thank you.
Thank you. We are removing an existing house that was built in nineteen sixty-six. It's approximately seventeen hundred square feet and what we are going to be doing is putting up a new, um, two-story, single-family residence that is, uh, thirty-four eighty-nine square feet. We are looking for one variance and that is habitable floor area. The maximum habitable floor area in this zone, which is R four, is thirty-two-twenty, so we are two-hundred-and-sixty-nine square feet over the habitable floor area. We are not over the floor area ratio at all. The floor area ratio with this lot is only twenty-three point two-five. This zone allows thirty percent. The lot is approximately fifteen thousand, I believe the survey says fifteen thousand and six square feet, um, which gets you up towards R three. And, um, this house, if you did go into the R three, uh, numbers or, uh, my mind just like.
Lot size.
Yeah, thank you, lot size. It would need lot size of R three, but it would still be under the habitable floor area for R three and we would only be one point two-five percent over the floor area ratio, though we are considerably under the floor area ratio for R four. I believe because of this size of the lot, that we can easily handle the additional two-hundred-and-sixty-nine square feet in habitable floor area. This lot, there's only one other lot across the street that's approximately fifteen hundred square feet and I believe the tax map said it was fifteen hundred and two square, fifteen thousand and two square feet. All the other lots in the area are between eleven thousand and thirteen thousand square feet. So overall, the mass of this lot and the size of this lot can handle the little bit bigger square footage. We need no front yard, rear yard, or side yard variances. We need no height variances. It's a very, um, simple house, as you can see, and it is a very, very large lot. We tried to, um, condense the driveway on the left side of the house and a very simple walk. You can see the, maybe I can walk up to the board, might be easier. This area is a covered porch. This is the two-story area of the house and the rear of the house is a one-story area. We did that to play with the massing a little bit so the house would not appear, uh, very large on the lot. If you take a look at, um, the A-one, the second page, um, you'll see that the style is sort of a quasi-country, French, maybe you'll see it. I assume, I assume you have the drawings in front of you. Where we will have a stone first floor, a, um, a copper or metal roofed, uh, covered porch and a stucco second, a second floor. We have clear story windows in the front and the back. Because, let's see now, further down. There, that one, that should be it. There we go. Because we have the one-story, um, family room that vaults just right over the stairs. It does not need to be, uh, calculated as twice the square footage because of the low plate heights and we, you cannot build a second floor in that area. The area that does have double height over the, uh, the walkway and the foyer, that has been covered according to the, on, the ordinance as double floor area. But the foyer in the back will be cathedral, so those clear story windows will be into the house. They will not be into the attic area. At this point, the only attic area will be a little bit over the bedroom area and that'll be for utilities and general storage. That access to the attic will be with a pull-down stair, uh, by the bedrooms where that attic will be over. If we go to the next two pages, I don't know if you're interested in the side elevations, they look pretty simple. As you can see, the one-story area in the back with the little covered porch in the back and then the same in the front. On the floor plans, um, what we have is a two-car garage in the front. We have the foyer with stairwells, uh, to the left, dining room, walk-in pantry, butler's pantry kitchen to the right, a great room in the center of the house and that will be the, um, vaulted area with skylights and clear story windows. And then an office and, um, a bedroom for my client's, uh, parents when they come to visit from China. It's either the in-laws or the, the parents, whoever is there that six months. But that will be parent, a parent suite on the first floor. On the second floor, we have four bedrooms and three baths, laundry room. Like I said, we have a two-story foyer that was counted twice and the pull-down stairs. It's, um, not a very, uh, large house. There are other houses in the neighborhood on, on beer terrace that are comparable in size. I looked through the tax rolls and there were a number of them in the thirty-three-hundred square feet range, um, especially the ones that had slightly bigger lots. The other side of the lot, um, which would be to the, um, northeast of this property is R three and, um, that area had a, a number of larger homes, um, that were within the R three zone and much, and larger than thirty-three-hundred square feet. I believe, uh, that this variance can be easily granted, um, without causing a substantial detriment to the, uh, public good, granting the variance would not substantially impair the intent of, and the purpose of the land use plan or the zoning, master zoning plan. And I think this house would be a very attractive, uh, additive to the neighborhood. A little bit different than what's sort of been going on in town.
Thanks, Ms. Miseo. Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness?
That's not so much a question, but I'd rather, it's sort of a statement, but I'd rather say it now to give you an opportunity to respond to, you know, my concern. And the house looks great, um, and I don't think I have a problem with the, of the negative. I'm, I'm more concerned about the law and that it, that it's oversized and us having a justification because there's no, there's no hardship here and I see it's a double lot. My concern is, uh, almost one and a half times.
Is it a double lot?
Not a double lot. I shouldn't say double lot. It's fifteen thousand over versus nine, ninety-three.
It's an oversized lot, right.
It's an oversized lot, not, not double size.
Right.
But, uh, hundred and sixty percent, maybe more than a.
Almost double.
Double. So, but my concern, my concern is when I look down at the block, uh, on this particular block, you know, and I get that R three is nearby, it is an R four and the rest of the block is all substantially similar, bigger houses, but nowhere, none of them are nowhere near the, the limit. Come, combined with my biggest, usually the stand, the minimum width is seventy-five. Here, we're still at a seventy-foot wide lot, so I'm still concerned that coming down this street, we're, you know, we're being asked to permit, and I guess it's under C two, that this is substantially great. Now, what are we under here?
No, this is a D variance.
This is a D, this is a ratio variance? No, no.
No, but I was told this was a D variance.
No, this, just so we're all clear.
No, I think it was a C two.
This is, this, this is for habitable floor area, not ratio. The floor area ratio is a D.
Oh, is it D? No, no, this isn't a ratio, right.
Yeah. Habitable floor area is a Z.
Right.
This is a bulk.
Oh.
So, so this is a bulk, so this would be.
That's interesting.
This would have to fall under, uh, either a C one for, um.
It would be C two.
The traditional hardship, you know, uh, like we did with the gentleman before with my cousin, Mr. Wenzel. He's not my cousin, by the way, just to record on the record.
I'll be understanding.
Uh, but, you know, that there, where there's a physical characteristic that's causing the, uh, variance condition here, and I don't put, mean to put words into, uh, the, the architect's mouth here, but in essence, uh, her last comments were along the lines of a C two, uh, the flexible C two variance, which basically states, uh, it doesn't involve a hardship. What it states is that this is the, because of various aspects of this lot and how it's been planned out, that it presents, uh, a better planning alternative and it does not, uh, violate any of the zone's, uh, other, uh, standards and doesn't provide a, uh, a hit, uh, a negative, um, impairment to overall zone in the master plan. And in essence, that, uh, using that flexible standard, what the, uh, argument is here is that because of the, the lot size having, uh, being unusually larger than others, that this additional sized property, additional sized home, uh, can be accommodated on the site without causing any other, uh, variance conditions. So it's not a hardship, so it's not a C one, but it is, uh, and once again, I'll put words in the architect's mouth, but the way I heard it, it sounded to me like it would be a recommendation under the C two variance.
Yeah, I, it, because it's not a D, it's definitely a C two. I came in here with the opinion that it was a D variance and that's how I was told also to notice and, um.
Well, you noticed for the area.
You noticed correctly.
You noticed for the area, so you're fine.
No, but I'm just saying, and I even paid the fees for the D variance.
Well, area or ratio is both three hundred.
Pardon?
It's the same rate. It, the area is the same as a ratio.
Oh, I thought only a D variance would pay, you pay more.
No.
They upped it since you retired.
Oh, okay. They got me. It used to be that the D variance was more.
I, I would like to also say, last year, right around this time, you came in front of the board and at that time, a plan was presented, a square footage of forty-five-hundred square feet on the lot.
Yes.
So.
In fact, that's, I was just going to bring that up.
So I actually appreciate the fact that you're coming back a year later and took time out to think about the plan.
Well, I didn't do this project a year ago.
You weren't here a year ago?
Oh, I was here on another matter and I got my variance because I was only a couple hundred square feet over.
I don't remember who the architect was.
There was another architect, um, that my client had hired and after, I guess, coming back a couple times, um, the last, they had like a forty-five-hundred.
Forty-five-hundred square feet.
And I think they had like a forty-two-hundred.
Yes, so we.
And then, um, basically when they saw me, they called me afterwards and said, "Help", and I said, "Well, first off, there's no way in heck I'm coming in here with a forty-five-hundred square foot house."
Right.
We could, you, you, we have to bring this down. I understand floor area ratio allows you a forty-five-hundred square foot house, but it's just not cutting it in this neighborhood. So I sort of looked at the neighborhood, looked at what other houses were, and, and the neighborhood's a little deceiving because it looks like all those nice, neat little by levels, but some of them are double and double and a half deep, where we've got some pretty big ones on the street. Like I said, I, I looked through tax, uh, numbers and whatnot to see, um, you know, how big they were and there were a couple thirty-three-hundred and change homes. This one is the first one that's going to look a little bit different. I think there's only one other down the street that, is there two? Okay.
I don't remember there, oh, sorry. Yeah, I don't remember there being even another one. Yeah, but go ahead.
Yeah, I thought there was one down at the cul-de-sac that was a little different, but either way.
But I appreciate the fact that this will look different than all the other homes that we're seeing in Livingston and I appreciate the fact that it is now a thousand square foot, square, square feet smaller than the initial plan.
Yeah.
And also recognizing the fact that the lot is an R, an R three size lot. So I think that the plans look, um, they're well within the scope of.
Yeah, I wasn't the person involved. I never would have come to you with a thousand square foot.
Like, I can't imagine, I just don't remember who was here a year ago, but I, but I do have, because I kept it open as a, as a pending application and I pulled it out and I looked at it and I saw that it was forty-five-hundred square feet and then when I saw that, it had changed, so I do appreciate that.
Yeah, no, I, I knew it could never happen.
Does anybody on the board have any other questions for this witness?
I just have one thing. I, I don't know if you could actually answer it, but the, um, as far as the attic goes, I mean, I do see that it, it is very tall. I mean, I know it's not the whole house, uh, size for the attic, but we, would the client accept the condition of approval that the attic can't be used as habitable space?
Sure, and, and I, and I, I believe, wasn't the ordinance changed that if you do use the attic now and it's over floor area ratio, you have to come back anyway?
Yes, but we, we.
It's kind of, it's also in flux right now until it's actually.
Yes, it has.
Okay, well, let's put it this way. Our intent at this point, we have a pull-down stair designed, we, we don't have it designed for a staircase up to the second floor and like I said, the whole center of the house is skylights and clear story for the, specifically for the family room.
So we, you, you would agree on behalf of your clients that.
I think that's fine.
That condition of approval, no habitable space?
And if they need it, they have to come back.
Does anyone in the public have any questions for this witness? Does anyone in the public want to make a statement? Does anybody on the board want to make a statement? Does anybody on the board want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve with the condition of approval for the.
I'll second this. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Kenya? Mr. Horn?
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Great, thank you very much. And maybe there'll be another year or two of it.
Okay, lot, lot fifty-one oh one, lot ten thirty-two, Waywood Road, application, which was road, sorry, application number twenty-two-five dash forty-eight dash V, Devindra and, and Kendal Gandhi. Application seeks approval for the first and second floor addition in violation of the following section, one-seven-zero dash eighty-seven C C three habitable floor area ratio, twenty-one percent allowed, twenty-four point four percent proposed, three point four percent square, square feet variance requested.
Good evening, Ms. Horn.
Hi, how are you?
Thank you for hearing us today.
Hi.
All right, so, um, just want to make sure that this, uh, we have, uh, the applicant homeowner is Mr. Gandhi, you're here tonight?
I'm, yes.
Okay, all right.
My name's Elizabeth Widroff, I'm representing Mr. Gandhi tonight. He's going to do most of the talking tonight. Unfortunately, the architect couldn't be here, but Mr. Gandhi, uh, based on his knowledge of the property and the plans itself, uh, can speak to them. So I'm going to.
Elizabeth, give me your last name again?
Sure, it's Widroff and that's spelled W I D R O F F.
All right, Ms. Widroff, why don't you go ahead?
Sure, I'm going to actually turn it over to Mr. Gandhi to, uh, speak to the.
Okay, so, Mr. Gandhi, do you swear for and tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, very good. So, Mr. Gandhi, you can sit, don't, you know, you, you want to, it's, this is not the Supreme Court, it's okay. Don't let the bowtie fool you. Okay, so, Ms. Widroff?
Yes. Sure. So, Mr. Gandhi, can you tell us, uh, about the property and what it is that you're proposing?
Okay, so, thank you very much and good evening. So, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak about this application. So, I am residing at thirty-two Waywood Road since February two thousand seventeen. So this is my primary residence for about, uh, more than eight years now. So right now, uh, we really love this, um, community and towns and we feel we are fortunate enough to raise our kids in this cosmopolitan community and we're excellent schools. So right now, uh, we are requesting for the load, uh, coverage variance only, uh, to accommodate the modest expansions in the existing home. This is the one and a half story, split level house. It has only three bedrooms right now. So over the period of times, uh, our family is growing and our family needs are, uh, evolving, so that's why we are requesting for this expansion. Current, this home, uh, is completely insufficient to work us efficiently, to have the wellbeings and the privacy and other things. In post-pandemic area, me and my work both are, have the hybrid work models, so we work, frequently we have to work, uh, home and we need our private, uh, area because we spend lots of times in the virtual meeting and phone calls and other things, so we need like a quiet in the, uh, private work area, so we can take our calls and other things without impacting our work. Besides that, we have two teenage kids, uh, they are growing and they need their own space and the privacy and we, our parents, uh, visit us and they stay with about six to eight months in a year, so we need a separate room for them as well. Uh, right now, whenever they are coming, it's like we have to kind of, uh, disarrange ourselves and we have to share the rooms and other things. So that's why we are thinking like we need to do the little bit expansions for our home. This is purely a necessity, not for the luxury purpose or anything else. And again, we have like, uh, extended families and the friends, so we invite them, we host them, so we need to expand our kitchen and the living room area a little bit, so that's why we want to do the little bit expansion. So right now, uh, we are in the R three zone. In the R three zone, uh, it is three thousand five hundred and twenty square foot is allowed. My lot is undersized, non-conforming, so right now, we are asking for about three thousand five hundred, uh, space total together. So right now, we are kind of breaching only one, uh, habitable area ratio. We are breaching it, but other than that, uh, all the fronts, sidewalks, everything are compliant, we don't need anything else. And another thing is right now, uh, there, and we are building this, doing the renovation on the existing concrete slab and, uh, after this renovation, we are planning to remove certain concrete slab as well, which will improve the imperious ratio as well. So this renovation will positively, uh, work instead of going to into negative sides. Again, as I mentioned, uh, this, uh, additions, whatever we are doing, uh, it is purely on the necessary basis, not for any luxury purpose. So I would like, uh, yeah, so that's why I would like to request board to support our application.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness? I have a question. The garage, you have the garage in the back, there's like the, the, it's the, um, separate.
Pull it up there.
Garage in the back, right? And then the house, the garage that's. And then the house, the garage that's attached to the house, is that a garage as well or using, what, what is that?
So we have the detached car garage in the back side. Uh, so right now, we are keeping as it is. We are not touching anything. Uh, so let me just bring the survey. So this is the car garage here, one story, and this is the driveway. And right now, we are planning to do the expansion here in this area. And here, there is the concrete area, this is what I was talking about, we are planning to remove. So that will improve the imperious ratio.
So the area where the garage is that's attached, not the detached garage, but the area that had the garage that's attached to the house, what is that used for? Is that livable space right now? What, or is that the garage? What is that? So you have the detached garage and the garage that's attached to the house? I'm just, I'm just wanna, wanna know what, is that livable space right now where the garage is?
So right now, okay, so we have provided, uh, let me just go to. Um, if you don't mind, can you please repeat your question?
Okay, no, 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 cuz it's, cuz I, I backed up. I wanted to look at it closely. So you have the detached garage, you pull in the detached garage is right there. And then you have your house, and then to the left of the house, you have the garage, right? So is that also used for cars or is that, is that going to be part of the addition? Like, what, what is?
So we are not, that is to park the car only, that is not part of additions. We are not touching the garage.
You have two garages then?
Two car garages.
You have two, but you have the detached garage and the attached garage?
No, no, we don't have attached garage. We have only detached garage.
Okay, right, so that part, okay, thank you, okay.
Well, would be.
The garage is used as habit.
Would be the garage is, yeah, it's an office bedroom in here.
Right, okay.
My guess is one time it got converted and that's.
I just, that's, I just wanted to clarify that, that's all.
Yeah, I think, when we bought the house, it was, uh, they converted, I do not know.
Okay.
Uh, that was before I voted.
So the detached garage was there when you bought the house?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, just wanted to clear that up, thank you.
Right.
Does anybody else have any questions for this witness? Yes, it is. Um, does anybody in the public have any questions? Does anybody on the board want to make a statement? Does anybody on the board want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
What?
Who said what?
Mr. Khan?
Approve.
Motion.
Second to Horn.
Second Horn?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kenya, Mr. Horn, Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Motion carries, congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, the last one we got, block thirty-three oh five, lot twenty-one oh one, uh, fifteen Carney Terrace. Application number twenty-twenty-five dash forty-six dash V, Hilton Chung. Applicant, applicant seeks approval for a deck expansion in violation of the following section, one-seven-zero dash ninety-eight C four, rear yard setback forty feet required, twenty-five-point-seven feet proposed, fourteen-point-three feet variance requested. One-seven-zero eight ninety-eight C four, A floor area, two-hundred square feet allowed, three-seventy-four square feet proposed, one-seventy-four variance requested. One-seven-zero ninety-eight C four C, deck height three feet allowed, ten feet proposed, seven feet variance requested.
Hi, uh, my name is Hayek Shin. I'm the architect for the project. I'm gonna be presenting the project to you. The, my client, the owner, is in the, uh, audience.
Okay.
Uh, we're not planning to, he's not going to testify.
Okay, I, once again, you beat me to the punch cuz I just wanted to make sure that the applicant was here. Hello to the Chungs. Uh, okay, so, sir, can, please, uh, spell your name for me?
Uh, my name is Hayek Shin, H A Y K, last name Shin, E K S H I A N. Um, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. My license is current. Um, I've appeared in front of this board numerous times. Um, I graduated from New Jersey Institute of Technology with Bachelor's of Architecture.
License is current?
Current, yes.
Okay, I, I was gonna ask you if you got an email, but I'm, apparently, that's, that's too old of a joke. I gotta, I gotta find something new. All right, well, let's where you, let's where you end.
You need the material.
I need new material. I guess, you know, we gotta say text, it's twenty-twenty-five. Um, so, sir, do you swear a firm tell the truth before the zoning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, so, uh, why don't you go ahead?
All right, we're.
Wait, before we start, does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There being no objections, this witness is accepted as an expert in architecture.
Okay, so we're in front of this board to, uh, ask for a, a variance for a, a deck expansion. Um, this is a recently built house, um, that was pretty much built in a way that had maxed out the.
Sir, I think you're gonna need to bring the mic a little closer to you.
Can't hear you at all. Okay. It was built in a way that, uh, it, it maxed out the, um, uh, zoning requirements for the lot. As you can see, the rear, um, setback line, the forty feet, kind of hugs the house. And the deck, the existing deck, which is ten by sixteen, uh, feet, is, encroaches into, into the rear yard. Um, the town ordinance allows us to have a two-hundred-feet limit in order to encroach. Uh, however, the existing deck, uh, is also elevated off the ground, uh, by around nine feet, nine to ten feet. Um, the reason for that is, uh, the topography of the land, um, kind of slopes down towards the, uh, the backyard. So we are not able to, uh, build a patio and utilize the rear yard. We, we have to have a deck, uh, for, for the, um, homeowners to enjoy their, uh, backyard. The, a, a ten-by-sixteen-foot deck only allows for a small, uh, table and up to like about four people. So it's, it doesn't, it, from a utilitarian standpoint, it doesn't really function well as a deck. So we want to expand it out, um, towards the rear yard by about, um, eight feet. So making the total dimension, uh, sixteen by eighteen feet so that we can add a decent-sized table and have, uh, more than four people that can enjoy, enjoy the backyard. Uh, everything else stays the same way, uh, the stair, we're not touching it, existing deck. We're not planning to take it down. We, we're just going to build on top of the existing foundation and add to it. Um, and as you can see, the way that we are expanding the deck, um, the deck isn't expanding, the whole face of the deck doesn't encroach into the rear yard. It's just the, you know, corner, corner of the deck. So even though, uh, the rear yard setback is twenty-five-point-seven feet, it's just at the corner and then it expands out. Um, so the variances that we are asking for is the rear yard setback at twenty-five-point-seven feet and, um, and that the deck is elevated off the ground. Um, our hardships are pretty much the location of the building and the topography of the land. We cannot do anything about. Um, with that, I'll take, uh, your question.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness?
I just get confused about the history. So was it in compliance? I just see it over the forty, over the forty-foot setback now?
Livingston allows us to build, encroach into the rear yard setback as long as the encroachment is less than two-hundred square feet. The current deck.
As long as the encroachment, okay. So now you're going over, now you're going over the two-hundred square.
Exactly.
And, and it's getting a little bigger, but that's why it's legal now, okay?
I'd like to also add that the, um, the neighboring property in the rear is actually a wooded area. So it's not going to be obtrusive to anybody. Um, it's pretty private in the, the backyard.
Anyone else? Does anyone in the public have any questions for this witness? Please approach.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry.
Yeah, if you can state your name and address.
Okay, uh, my name is Xiao Yi Fang. My address is Eight Dana Drive.
Okay, and this is the, uh, I'm sorry, chairman. Uh, this is time for questions to the architect. Not, if you want to make a statement, that's later, but now it's just questions to the architect.
Okay, okay, yeah. Um, first, can I confirm that the variance or variances you're, you're requesting? Three of them, right? First, the area, um, second, the, the height, and the third one is, uh, the, the backyard setback. Um, in terms of the, the height, is that the, the existing structures already at nine or ten feet?
Correct.
Is that an, like, existing approved variance?
It was approved and built that way. I was in the architect, uh, for the original structure, so I cannot answer if it, uh, went through a variance process, if it wa, if it was approved that way. So I.
And also, well, uh, I'm, I'm not an expert in, in architecture, so also the, the regulations. Uh, I wonder, the, the setback, does it include only the, the deck? Or it include the, the pathway and stairs as well?
The setback includes the deck, um.
Meaning, should?
Yeah.
The pathway and the stairs also?
The, the, the stairs are far, the stairs, I believe, are farther away from the, um, the rear. The closest point is the corner of the deck, that's twenty-five-point-seven feet away from.
Right, I, I think, I think to, to assist Ms. Feng and her question, I think the, the question was, when we say, uh, that the deck violates the rear yard setback.
Right.
It would be, because now we're, you're, you're asking to expand the deck.
Right.
It would be everything beyond the red line that goes diagonally through the deck.
I would say everything that has to do with the deck, not the walkway itself.
Right, the walkway is, the walkway is not.
Right.
Part of that, it's not considered structure for the purposes of setback. So would, it would be everything you're seeing there that's beyond the red line for those that are diagonally through the deck.
Okay, so not, not just a corner of the deck, but everything beyond that red line?
Right, and I think the architect, what the architect is saying is that when they measure the rear yard setback, that the, the, the variance they're requesting, they have to request the variance from the furthest point in.
Interesting.
So the, he's saying from that corner to the lot line, cuz they've had lot line runs on the diagonal, you, you, what he's acknowledging is that is where the, the variance number is generated from.
Okay, yeah, the, the maximum variance.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Um, and I'm sorry, the hardship is, you, you cannot, like.
The hardship is that, um, the house is elevated and we cannot have a patio simply, um, uh, because we're nine feet off the ground. Um, and the reason for that is the topography of the land that comes down, which is lower in the backyard. Um, so for the client to enjoy their backyard, we need a, we need a decent-sized deck. Uh, the current deck size, ten by sixteen, that can't, doesn't accommodate for, um, and doesn't allow enough space, uh, for a table, enough, um, people to enjoy the, enjoy the rear yard. Um, and, uh, pretty much the house is situated, situated where it is and so I, we cannot build a deck elsewhere. So we're, we're just proposing to expand this existing deck.
But, uh, in the township engineer's letter, it says there is, I forgot the exact word, um, but something like prohibitive slope, slope, there's nothing like that. Is there anything unique to this lot?
Um, the fact that the land itself slopes down so that the, to, the house is in like a typical house, two to three feet off the ground, where we can put two, a couple of steps and land on a patio, which could be much larger, let's say twenty by twenty. Because we're nine feet off the ground, um, it is not easy for us to, uh, enjoy the backyard from the first floor where the main living area is.
But is that situation unique to this lot? Cuz I, I'm not sure if I, I say this as a statement or as a question. If I'm not speaking correctly, please stop me. I, I find it's not uncommon for Livingston's lots, uh, to be sloppy. Take my lot as example, it's sloppy. And in fact, the, your lot is about, I say, about a story higher than mine. So you're already on the elevated lot.
So I would call that a hardship and I would say it's a u-unique to this property as well as it could be unique to other properties as well. Um, one reason it's also unique to this property is that the building is right at the rear yard setback line. Um, if you, if your property had distance between the rear yard setback line and the house, you can easily build a deck, um, an elevated deck without, um, without going through a variance, uh, process. However, because this building is right at the setback line and we're elevated, we do not have any other option, so that's, that creates a hardship for us.
Is, is deck a necessity?
I have a question. I have, I have. What?
Uh, go ahead, good.
No, my question is, the, the walkout, that's, I, but we don't have the plans, I don't think, for the house, but they had the, the room that, um, exits onto the deck is, that it lines up with the room that's there. Is that the kitchen or the dining room or the family room, whatever that is? So the deck sort of needs to be at that level because in order to walk out onto a deck, that, so you're just basically taking the existing deck and extending it. Right, without having to re, you know, renegotiate how it is, how it looks back there and steps going down or whatever. So you're basically just taking it because it's, you're walking out directly onto that deck.
Right.
And then just making it larger.
Exactly, extending it eight feet further in order to be able to use that deck.
Right.
Um.
And so it makes sense to sort of have it where it is because that's, it's already an existing.
Exactly, we, you, you don't, once you're living at the fam, in the living, uh, space, the family room on the first floor, uh, if we were to, you know, have the outdoor space ten feet below, great. It's not easy to enjoy that space because you would have to go fly, you know, two flights of stairs to, uh, you know, bring down food, uh, things like that, watching the kids, uh, would be an issue. Um, so, um, for that reason, we would like to have the deck larger.
Sorry, can I ask more questions?
Any other questions?
Um, yeah, I wonder, uh, you mentioned the kitchen is on the second floor. That's why you choose to, to have the deck there as well. Um, yeah, I wonder, kitchen at the second floor, is that a architecture?
Well, we're not here, we're not here to discuss the kitchen, we're here to discuss the deck. So we have to sort of keep, keep on point. So we're here to discuss the deck and if you have any other questions pertaining to the deck, that would be great.
I just feel, the, the reason for the deck to be there is connected to the kitchen, that's why I'm asking the kitchen. Sorry, sorry about that. Um, so, is there any?
Just to answer that in a way, um, the entrance of the house at the front is at this level. So you come into the house and your living spaces on, on this first story. This is pretty much a walkout basement. So all your living spaces are up here, uh, when you're at the first story. And the, the client usually spends most of their ta, time on that floor, the kitchen, family room, all that is there. So they want to just enjoy that space in the backyard and ex, expand the deck, uh, to be able to do that.
Cuz I'm looking at this lot.
No, we can't change the, we can't change the, the architecture of the house. It is what it is, so it's basically just taking what's existing and then making it larger.
I just wonder if there's any alternative way to achieve that.
Well, I, it doesn't seem like there is.
I, I don't see any other way.
But is a larger deck really a necessity? That, that's my question.
Well, the, the, quite frankly, the other option is to put, as they go. Well, the, quite frankly, the other option is to put, as they go out, you, you, I, I, I just want to make sure that, that this, what they're doing is they're using the existing deck. And the existing deck is being expanded, this is not a new deck. So this is a deck that already exists at that height. So it's not, they're not making a new deck. I just want to...
Correct.
Be clear about that, right?
Yes.
Okay, you have any other questions, ma'am?
No, no questions, no other questions.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Does anyone have questions, do you have a question?
Yeah, and I assume, I think the questioner was from Eight Dana Drive, is that the residence directly behind this?
I'm not sure.
Oh, it's not?
Actually, I'm a bit confused by this lot, because when I look online, seems there are two very narrow lots between us. But from my backyard, I can see it directly, so I, I'm not sure.
So I, I guess Mr. Weisman's question was, are you, are you the next-door neighbor?
I believe I am.
You believe you are?
Yes.
Okay, must, so there's some large wooded, there's some large area between your house and their house?
You're the next-door neighbor, you must be on the left then, because the house on the right has a big deck in the back. The house, so here's the, here's the house that we're talking about.
I think it's the back, Laurie.
Are you talking at the back, you're talking in the back?
What's your house number again?
Eight Dana Drive, my backyard is facing...
On the other side, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right.
And then, yeah, and then my, my follow-up is, I did see a, a big row of trees, which, who's maintaining those trees? I couldn't tell which property line it was on and whose trees those were.
I, I believe they're on the neighbor's property.
No, but for me, it would be relevant, I think, who's maintaining those trees.
I believe those are on my property, sorry.
Would you like to come up?
All right, hold on, hold on, okay. But, what, there's, there's a question, can the architect answer the question that Mr. Weisman has resented about the landscaping on the property?
I believe the, the wooded area is on the neighbor's property.
Okay.
No, okay, it's, it's on the board.
Okay, does anyone in the public want to make a statement?
I, I believe I'm the, the neighbor right behind their, their backyard.
Now you can make a statement.
Oh, sorry.
We're gonna swear you in again, Ms. Feng, do you swear firm, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Feng.
Well, I just want to first talk about, you mentioned that the backyard is facing a wooded area, it's very private. That's what I thought when I bought my house, I bought it in summer. And when I step on my deck, I don't see any house, but wait, wait for a few months, when the leaves are gone, then you will see all the houses. I, I learned it the hard way. And, I think the, the variance, the, the effect is, is compounding, not just one variance, right? You know, you're asking for a, a, a bigger deck, well, it's existing, it's already higher, like, three times than, than what normally allowed. And the, the size of the deck is almost twice as what's allowed. And it's getting into, well, forty percent less than what's required backyard setback. So those effects, they're compounding. And, and also, you're on an elevated lot, from the deck, or even from, from your yard, you can see my backyard clearly. I can hear everything happening in your backyard. And that makes me a bit concerned about this expansion. When you have a bigger deck, well, it's gonna be a perfect place for entertainment, I'm sure. There're gonna be people on that deck, and I'm going to hear, and, and the people be able to see my backyard. So, that loss of privacy is what's concerning me a bit.
The owners are here?
Yeah. Any other comments?
Any other comments from anyone on the board? Okay, does anybody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Well, if we could have discussion, I, I would want, if I was, if I was gonna approve, I think I'd want that this owner to also be required to have, to have a condition of evergreen trees in, in the back there.
You can't, you can't do that with this.
When there's a motion.
No, you can't, you can't, that can't be, that can't be a condition of approval, because it's not part of the, A, it's not part of the application, and B, it's not, I, you, you can't, you can't make that, you can't make that a condition of approval, because it's not part and parcel of the application. If the application already had, if it was a requirement to place some type of vegetation, and you wanted to say, well, you know, we want a certain type of, you know, we want to make sure you're, you're, you're increasing the vegetation, that's, that's one thing. I mean, we, you can, I think the applicant is here, okay, and the applicant's probably heard some concerns. So perhaps maybe they want to take it of their own volition to apply the good neighbor policy, and maybe want to see what they can do, but I, you wouldn't be able to be an enforceable condition of approval under this scenario. They're not building a new home, which would involve site plan work. There was a, I thought that.
Okay, Mr. Ekshian, would you come up?
Since we already have a wooded area, you know, during the summer, nobody can really see across. And, and they do not want to make it a condition of approval, because then, you know, upkeeping those trees becomes an issue. If someone goes with the trees, they have to plant, then the next person they sell to have to plant, make sure those trees are in good condition. You know, there are many other neighbors on that property, none of them are complaining here. If, if somebody is very particular about their privacy, they can also plant evergreen trees on, on their own property.
What, what, just to piggyback on what Mr. Weisman had brought up, it is unusual for this type of scenario, for there to be a condition of approval, that there wouldn't be any light spillage from any placement of any lights on the deck. That there would, you know, be an understanding that they are in a residential neighborhood, and to, to respect their neighbors. But if Mr. Weisman, not putting word to his mouth, but if there was, it would be a reasonable condition of approval for the board to place on something like this, to say that there, that any light, lighting put on the deck, or in or around the deck, that it be properly downward-facing, not facing the neighbor, and to minimize, if not eliminate, any light spillage onto neighboring properties. That would be something that would be in line with this type of application, Mr. Weisman was going along those lines.
Yeah, I would adopt that.
Yeah.
I would adopt that.
I think that that's a reasonable understanding. So we can have that as a condition of approval, subject to the motioner and the second to agree to that being an amendment to the motion.
Agree to manage the motion.
Absolutely, absolutely. Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenny? Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, you ready for the next one?
Okay, I'm making a motion to adjourn, who's making a motion?
Motion approved.
Okay, we're done.